Next is the public presentation comment period. Sorry about that, I thought my voice was carrying. Ms. Mounds, has anyone signed up for a public presentation comment period?
No, sir.
Hearing none, is there anyone who would care to speak? Anyone care to speak? Third and final call.
You have a hand up.
You have a hand up there.
There's a big old mint, you missed it.
I bet the teacher missed it in school too.
Yes, they did. Yes, they did.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak. My name is Walton May. I live 224 Manassas Avenue, Front Row of Virginia.
So you are also signed up for the comment period at the end of the meeting? Did you want to meet both?
I can do the end if you'd like, I assume. I apologize.
Okay, this comment period is for agenda items?
Okay, no worries. I will be happy to come back.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, the public comment period is closed. Next is report from our board members, Mr. Carter.
Hi, Mr. Carter.
I didn't see you, sorry.
Dan Kimbrough?
Yes.
Melanie Salins, 954 East Drive, Mobile Town, Virginia. I had not planned to speak, but since nobody else is, I would like to comment on the closed session section of the meeting where you're talking about purchasing property. Fork District in town limits. This is what the citizens are so upset about are the continued closed session meetings and the continued purchasing of properties while we're in the middle of this scandal. I would like to ask you to please listen to your citizens. Stop doing this right now, at least, not forever, but for at least right now. Please stop buying more properties until we get this mess figured out. Thank you.
Since I have these two hands, I'll make another call. Come on up.
Paul Gatter, 1221 Valley, Drive, Front Row. Yes, I agree with Melanie. To talk about purchasing another piece of land right now, that's ludicrous. What are you all thinking? What are you thinking? The way the budget is, the way the county, this county is almost on a personal bank up, so all you all do is spend money. That's all it is, like it's coming off the trees. You buy this, buy that, buy this, and then you raise taxes to cover it all. I hope I'm not making time, Mr. Ver.
None.
And, Mr. Stanley, every time we have a meeting like this, you're always downwriting stuff. Can I just go ahead and watch your writing?
I like to make notes from meeting to comments and speeches.
Can I see them? To see if they're notes?
I've got notes already on my agenda, who the speakers are, what the comments are.
Can I look out when the meeting's open?
You can certainly, you can come up and I can show you.
Okay.
All right.
Is there anyone else still who care to speak? Second call, third and final call. The agenda of public presentation is closed. Report of board members, Mr. Carter.
The only thing I would like to make notice, there was an article in the Northern Virginia Daily today, but it's getting hot out there and it's getting hotter. And just, I guess, a public service announcement, just be careful, stay out of the heat if you can. There are plenty of water. At times, you may want to turn down the AC just because everybody turns it up, that could cause some problems with the supplier. There could be rolling groundouts. And last thing is, it's important to check on your neighbors who may be living by themselves, and especially at the elderly. So just everybody, try to stay cool and just be aware of the hazards of some of this heat. That's all.
Mr. Carter.
Yes, I want to thank VDOT for the nice job they did to walk the land while I was on vacation. It was very nice. And also, I want to thank Ms. Mounds for taking the minutes for community policy management to lead today. It's not really her job, but she has done, of course, a couple of times. I want to thank her for doing that. And let's see, Mr. Gleason will be presenting an update for our youth advisory board at next meeting, the first meeting in August. So he will updating on where the youth advisory board has been and is going, and we look forward to hearing from him next meeting. Thank you.
Staying with the mood, it seems to me, let's go through quickly on this. One thing I did of concern to me was the swearing in and election of officers with the American Legion. And it looks like they have a real strong team for the post this year. Mr. Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Thursday, June 20th, I attended the Norman Shandor Regional Commission meeting. And on Saturday, June 22nd, I attended the annual reenactment and honored the reenactors at the Virginia Bear Museum. And it was the first annual, hopefully they'll continue to do that every year. On Thursday, June 25th, I attended the Chamber of Mixer at the library. Recommend people who are interested in businesses to attend those. On Saturday, June 29th, I attended a and participated in marriage renewal vows and masks with my wife. And then we subsequently celebrate our 35th wedding anniversary. Happy birthday. On Saturday, June 29th, I attended the POSF, that's Property Owners of Shandor Farms. It was a July 4th get-together, it was well-attended, well-planned out by Ralph Renaldi and the whole committee. They do a fantastic job. On July 5th, attended the fireworks at the 4-H Center and did a meet and greet with many fine folks out in the 4-H Center. I was glad to see the fireworks were back. Attended Darrell Funks in Wesager as JDR District Court Judge. Said goodbye to Clay Athie, probably won't be able to see him in years to come, he's going off to Florida. Then on, it was this past Saturday, attended the POSF with Bob Childress. And we just, and Bob discussed the survey. I've been going out door to door in that area. And in that particular area, there's a boundary line adjustment between Clark and Warren County. And we're very close to having a hearing. It will be a public hearing at the Shandor Farms banquet center there. And then today, I'm happy I was able to sign the affidavit, I have everything in, especially for your in jury. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fox.
I'd just like to report, I attended the last library board meeting. And it was interesting that they finally had the heating and air conditioning systems cleared. And that makes a big up. And I think they had to replace some kind of control board perhaps, because that was a big issue for a long, long time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a few items to report on. Development Review Committee met on June 26th of 2019. Committee discussed projects in the county, including the Rivermont Fire Department. Construction has begun on the site. The Merit Hotel, they're still waiting on their final BDOT approval. Committee also discussed projects in town, including a proposed harbor freight at Gateway Plaza and update on construction of the new hospital. Committee will meet again on July 24th. Building inspections, year to date, we had a total of 67 new home starts for the first half of the year. Of that number, 12 were in the town limits, the remaining 55 outside town limits. As a comparison, in 2019, we had a total of 181 new home starts for the year. And 86 through June 30th, based on a projected total of 134 new starts. Looks like our housing growth rate would be about 0.77 percent. And we're looking potentially at the second year in a row of a decrease in home starts. Again, the growth rates are lower, 2% to 3% maximum, well within our COT plan guidelines. For FY 1819 fiscal year, the number of permits was down significantly from 2,274 to 2,121. The total of inspections are down from 11,550 to 10,993. Tourism Committee contractor presented preliminary rate finding signage options for the community in early July. In the next month, they'll refine the options and present revisions back to the subcommittee. The full tourism committee meeting will meet again on August 14th. Convenience site paving, the asphalt of Route 345, 22 North, Cooley, and Route 340, Rockledge Convenience Sites has been resealed and striped, and the Linn's site was repaved and striped in June. Rural Edition, Rocky Lane, as Supervisor Gladys noted, that project was completed as of June 28th. The Ashby Station project, grading and stone placement has been completed, and I believe VDOT started surface treatment today. Also want to note, they've also started on the Oregon Hala project to improve the north end of that project. Tunnel Hawk Way, Rural Edition project in Shandor Farms, Blue Mountain Sanitary Districts has started, and we've been clearing, started clearing operations on that project. We hope to have it completed in about eight weeks. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So anyone have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I was informed that the air conditioning unit being across the stadium and the food concessions has been down. I know that the Parks and Rec is in charge of that, but they told us, has that been fixed?
As of a couple days ago, I believe that was fixed, yes, sir.
If my campaign's going to demand the food concessions at the Cardinals game Wednesday, so I hope it's up and running. Also, I have one more question.
Go ahead. Do you have one?
On our consent agenda number four, Mr. Stanley has Winchester Regional Airport. I didn't want to pull it, but I wanted to clarify because it says it's going to be paid for by the authority. So that's the Winchester Regional Airport that's going to pay for that, that our county funds are not going to be used for that.
That's correct. Orange County used to make a $5,000 annual contribution, that was stopped probably eight to 10 years ago. And since then, we have not been making any financial contributions to the airport authority. I know, I believe, Mr. Fox, you used to attend some of the meetings in the past?
No, not yet.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I handed out my collections report, just like to highlight the collections in the month of June. In June, our office collected $32,757 in delinquent personal property, business equipment, and business license taxes. So far this year, we've collected $248,013. And all of last year, we only collected $300,000, so we're definitely doing our, my paralegal and my staff's doing a really good job of collections this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I'm sorry. Mr. Whitten, the honor consent agenda is under seven and eight, has an extension on the font type, one with Pond Law Group, and the other with TACS.
That's correct.
When you read the motion, it says a minimum of changes, but you're telling me that there are really no changes except for the fact that we're extending it one more year.
With Pond Law Group, we're extending it for one year. We're also requiring a minimum of two auctions per year and a minimum of 20 properties to be offered for sale. The only other collection is, I mean, only interchange, sorry, is that Pond would collect a fee of 20% of the account balances as soon as they start the collections process. Prior to this, it started after two years, but this is in line with the agreement of TACS, that as soon as they start the collection process, they collect 20% attorney fees. And this is actually added on top of the balance, so this doesn't come out of the principal interest or penalty that's owed to the county.
So there are some significant changes. Would you recommend maybe we double a work session to just clear it up, make sure we understand everything?
If you would like to, the agreement starts August 1st, so we can, we don't have any work session scheduled between now and August 1st. Otherwise, the agreement expires July 31st. But I wouldn't say it's a major change, this is in line with the agreement with TACS, which we've had in place for three years, that they collect the 20% fee as soon as they start collections, and it's also allowed under the Virginia Code. And it was a request of county administration that we have a minimum of 20 lots for sale each year, just to make sure they were putting more properties back on the tax rolls and to have a minimum requirement. So, but if the board would like a work session, we can definitely do that.
Next is the approval amendment, special meeting of May 7, 2019.
I approve the youth comments of the meeting, May 7, 2019.
All in favor? Aye. Next is additional appropriations and transfers.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the appropriations and transfers as presented.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Approval of accounts.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the accounts as presented.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything to be, go for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull up number 10 for discussion.
Is there anything else to be pulled?
I would like to pull the number of, of 11.
Anyone else? If not, can you move?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with those two items.
Second. All in favor? Aye. And we go back to waiver files, authorization to advertise for a public hearing, ordinance for Warren County to participate, and a Shandor Valley Chief-Elected Official Consortium agreement for workforce development. Mr. Stanley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a federal statute, the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act of 2014, WIPOA, is the vehicle by which federal funding for workforce training is administered and dispersed. Under the WIIOA and its corresponding Virginia implementation legislation, codified at Virginia Code Section 2.2, 2470, these programs are implemented through an entity called a local workforce development board, which employs the various administrators and runs the programs. The Shandor Valley Workforce Development Board, which is the local workforce development board for the region, is organized as a non-start corporation, has a charter issued to the State Corporation Commission. Local workforce development boards are assigned to a particular region in which to operate. The goal of the WIIOA is that the activity to be local, which means that appointments should be bottom-up, not top-down. To accomplish this, the WIIOA requires that the appointments to the board directors of the local workforce development board be made by the chief elected official of the unit of local government the board serves. This is fine, larger locality with local workforce development board service area is the same as the boundaries of locality. More rural areas like ours or wherever the local workforce and development board will cover many localities. In that event, WIIOA requires the appointments to be made by the chief elected officials of the various localities collectively. This also requires localities to agree how to discharge the function, other functions that WIIOA delegates to CEOs. As a practical matter, given the need for administrative oversight, the various requirements, the agreement must be in writing. This time, the Shandor Valley Workforce Development Board seeking to have its member jurisdictions, of which Warren County is one, enter into the consortium agreement for the purpose of operating the federally funded workforce training programs and be able to access those programs. Mr. Chairman, I believe you're, as the chief elected official, you're invited to those meetings, and it was tough to make them all the time, but they can't get this complete until all the member jurisdictions sign off on the agreement.
Mr. Stanley, and WIIOA, they will not possess any money, nor will they have any property? Is that correct?
I don't believe they have any property. I believe what they do is they work for places like LFCC, Blue Ridge Community College to provide programs to be able to train the workforce.
Mr. Chairman, I made note that the WIIOA requires as a condition of the grant assistance that the localities be financially responsible in the event that a local workforce development board misuse its funds received under a WIIOA grant. Does that mean we would be responsible for some money if things didn't go well?
I would defer to the attorney on that. And obviously, I think, too, any specific questions, I know the director will be here at the hearing in August if we have it, they could answer any specific questions. But I know it's been operating for years, haven't had any issues, but you always worry about those possible concerns.
I understand. But now?
Yep.
Okay, that's the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fox, would you care to make a motion?
Yeah, I will. Sorry. I move that the board supervisors authorize the advertisement for a public hearing to be held on August 20th, 2019 regarding the participation of Warren County and the Shandor Valley Chief-Elected Officials Consortium.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Sarah. Authorization to advertise for public hearing, ordinance to amend, we ordinate section 177-3 of the Warren County Code, recreational shooting of firearms in Shandor Farms Sanitary District. Mr. Stanley.
Proprietors of Shandor Farms, Inc., POSF, has unanimously requested that the subdivision be added to the list of designated locations where the shooting of firearms is prohibited. Shandor Farms currently includes 2,830 lots, about 1,215 homes, and is the largest subdivision of Warren County. POSF has indicated that growth in the community has necessitated requests, that houses are simply too close to continue recreational discharge of firearms in your packets. A letter dated June 13, 2019 from Mr. Renaldi as POSF chairman. Currently, the following subdivisions prohibit the recreational shooting of firearms. Skyland Estates, Shandor Shores, Aspen Hill Farms, the Skyview Section, Lakefront Oil, Blue Mountain, Apple Mountain Lake South, Hynop, Stonewell Estates, Cedarville Heights, and Bowling View subdivision. Signs would have to be erected by POSF or the sanitary district at their expense to indicate a ban on shooting if the board held a public hearing and approved such ban. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Sarah?
Yes, so, Mr. Stanley, Mr. Renaldi is on our planning commission, is also chairman of the POSF, and he's in agreement and would support a motion by our board to send this to the planning commission?
And to hear?
Well, to send it, instead of having a public hearing right now, we'd send it down to the planning commission. And let them weigh in on.
And then would you wait how long?
Well, it would probably take about a month or two, and the planning commission.
Mr. Chair?
He wants that blank question to have a public hearing, so that would be, in September would be the public hearing, we could authorize it in August. So two months, I would say.
We get public hearings before, send it back to the planning commission before?
Well, this is not, the reason I pulled it was to send it to planning commission to have under Scott's.
I understand, it's fine, I just don't recall what's done before, because it comes before us. Usually we go along with what the Public Hearings Association requests. I believe it said in here it was to panelists, if we have a public hearing, they would give any resident of Shandor Farms, POA, the opportunity to comment, voice their opinion, their concern.
Well, Mr. Renaldi and I discussed, he's on the planning commission, he's the chairman of the POSF, and he said he had, he would support having to come down to the planning. If you're not, that's fine, I was just putting it out there to see if you all were able to...
Just trying to figure out the reasoning.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, it's a, you know, a big change for the citizens and, you know, everybody a chance to weigh in.
That's why we would have a public hearing.
Well, when it comes back to us, we still advertise it for a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we had one in South River District, not too long, a couple years ago, I believe it was just a hearing at this level. Everybody can speak at our level.
It was at the Bridge Farm, it was at the last time we had a public hearing. That's fine, if you're, you know.
What is your motion?
My motion would be to send it down to the planning commission.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Is there another motion?
Okay, I move the board supervisor authorized advertising for public hearing to amend section 177-3 of the Warren County Code, Shandor Farms subdivision, to list designated areas where shooting firearms is prohibited.
Second.
All in favor? We are moved to a closed session, Mr. Sarah.
I move the board into a closed meeting on provisions of section 2.2-37, 1181 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, for discussion of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, motion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointments, on floors of any public lot. I further move discussion, I move the Front Row of Warren County Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. Also, I move the board enter into a closed meeting on provisions of section 2.2-37, 83 for discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose. I further move discussion, I move the proper looking and fourth manager of district to limit the town from oil. Also, I move board enter into a closed meeting on provisions of section 2.2-37, 1187 for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation. I further move discussion, I move national litigation and accounting and debt services.
Second.
Finally, I move the board, sorry, finally, I move the board into a closed meeting on provisions of section 2.2-27, 1188 for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice. I further move discussion, I move to accounting and debt services.
I'll second.
Maybe we add this book, please, Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Gladys?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
We are moved to the closed session. We're back in session. Mr. Sarah?
I move the board certify to the best of each member's knowledge on the public business matters, awfully exempted from open meeting requirements under section 2.2-37, 1181 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Only such public business matters as were identified in motion by which the closed meeting was convened for heard, discussed, or considered and convened by a public body.
Second. Ms. Mounds, give a welcome.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Sarah?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Gladys?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
As to whether we appoint Marjorie Martin to fulfill the expired term in February 28, 22 to the Economic Development Authority?
I'm ready.
I said 28, 22.
Thank you. Second.
Mr. Sanders?
I did say four more, I did.
Ms. Mounds, can we have roll call?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Sarah?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Gladys?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Is there anyone else that has anything to bring forward from the closed session? If not, for clarification, since 2011, we've had an individual that has come to the county offering their property for sale. The only reason why it was on our closed session tonight is because another letter came, and we've taken no action on it.
Maybe we're not going to.
We're not, no, we took no action, taking no action means we're not doing anything with it. That's correct. and we've taken no action on it.
Maybe we're not going to.
We're not, no, we took no action, taken no action means we're not doing anything with it. That's correct. Next, general public presentation, comment period. Mr. Master, is anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Walt May.
Hi, I'm Walt May, 224 Manassas Avenue, here in Front Royal, and I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to, allowing me to speak. My name is Walt May, but I'm an independent, announcing my candidacy for the Shenandoah District and the Board of Supervisors in Warren County. I have 21 years of experience as a project manager in the telecommunications industry, eight years' experience in mortgage banking and brokering, five years of servicing my country as a U.S. Marine in the field of avionics. I believe that I have the skills to work and the work ethic to solve serious problems facing the board supervisors and the citizens of Warren County. I have deep roots in the county. I've been married to, married for 37 years to my wife, Taffy Whittington May, who grew up in Warren County. Taffy and our two children are all graduates of Warren County High School. The EDA scandal is by far the number one topic on the minds of most citizens, and they feel, they feel angry and they feel betrayed. I will work hard to remove, renew the confidence in our local government leaders. But citizens talk to me about other topics that weigh heavily on their minds, and the following six topics will definitely be part of my platform. The six topics are a balanced budget, managed taxes, improving the educational system, keeping the Shenandoah River clean, tourism, and smart county growth. I'm extremely proud of my skills, developed over 21 years in the telecommunications industry as a problem solver, a budget balancer, a contract manager, a listener, and a facilitator. I believe I can help by being part of the board supervisors resolving problems with integrity. I also believe that I can bring the diverse elements to the county. Now fractured and broken together, working together, we can chart a path forward for a common goal and growth of our citizens. I believe it is extremely important for the board supervisors to put the county first. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself to you. Again, I am Walt May. I am running for the seat on the board of supervisors in the Shenandoah District of Warren County. Thank you.
Mr. Master, anyone else?
Paul Gatter?
Paul Gatter, 1221 Valley Drive. First thing I want to say is to Mr. Whitten, at the zoning meeting concerning the crooked run rezoning from commercial to residential, you said that signs had been posted by law everywhere that needed to be. The main drive went into the shopping center, the target shopping center. If you go straight back to the gate, there are number ones, and there still isn't a rezoning sign up there, never has been, so evidently you didn't know what you're talking The last thing I want to say, I can't read it all because I lost my glasses a little bit ago, but the last thing I want to talk about is, I'm not taking anything away from the crimes of Jennifer McDonald. I find it outrageous that there's only been two women that are sitting in jail for this. I'm sure there's going to be some gentlemen that are going to be sitting in jail maybe, at least, I'm pretty sure there will be, but right now, it's really appalling that only two women are sitting in jail for this. And how long is this so-called forensic audit going to take? This isn't a Trump-Russia crime. I don't understand the length of this. How much money are we going to pay towards just one audit company to sit and mingle through all these papers? Thank you.
Mr. Master?
Kristi Atwood. Kristi Atwood, 1255 Cores Way, Midtown, Virginia. As you know, I've been very loud on social media regarding the Cherry Becker report and the EDA investigation. We've spent over $600,000 on the Cherry Becker report. I've already found so many errors in this report that is unbelievable. The Stokes Market did not sell for $510,000, it sold for $398,000. Cherry Becker had itself raised at 510. They were given a limited scope of information, a limited pile of information. That was all they were given. They were not able to see receipts, they were not able to see loan balances that had come in since they had started. They were guided on a trip that they, that someone wanted them to take. Now, you four board of supervisors members, I am pleading with you, you need to step in and take Mr. Carter, Doug, and Whitten out of the picture. Y'all need to ask the FBI, Virginia State Police, who I have been in contact with, to come in here and do something fair, because what's going on now is not fair. I'm not here to judge if innocent or who's guilty, and I think everybody has some guilt, and I think it's been a long-term culture of what has come in here, and there is much more money missing than what is set. But you got to get the people's hands out of it that want to cover their butts, because the solar project was to be paid for with new market tax credits, the Donny Poe Solar Project with Earth Right Energy, and it was paid for with new market tax credits, when Mr. Carter is on the board with People Inc., who administers the new market tax credits. So, it's up to you four, because we've already lost the shares, there's already blood in the game, and you gotta, you gotta keep any work from being shed, and you gotta put the light on who this really is going, because it's not fair to the two women sitting in jail. You need to get the big dogs, but you gotta take these three out first because they're covering the butts. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
No one else to sign up?
Mr. Chair, anyone else who cares, please do. Name and address, please.
Gretchen Davens, 424 Mountain View Drive, Front Royal. First of all, I'd like to say, Mr. Sager, please never apologize for asking questions. That's what we want you to do. I want to acknowledge a couple of my community members, Melanie Salins and Kristi Atwood, for sharing more information about what's going on in Warren County than I feel like I ever get. This is about my fourth or fifth meeting, I'm a relative newcomer to the meetings. I'm just so disappointed in this silence about what we're all so upset about. I moved to Warren County seven years ago, this could be my retirement home. My husband's semi-retired, and, you know, I'm, what's going on, you know, the EDA, the superintendent of schools, I mean, there's so many, seems like conflicts of interest among people in this community, and there's been money stolen, and this audit is a big mystery to all of us. It seems like what Kristi's been sharing, we should be, you know, we should be, we should know what's going on, and it's all about legal covering your backsides, and I think if we continue to defer to our legal counsel, and I don't know you, Mr. Whitten, but one of the things I read was that you knew about the Stokes Market and Jennifer and the sale, you didn't know when it happened, but you knew sometime afterwards, and that was 2014, and Jennifer McDonald was still working until last December, so what role do you play? Are you here for the people, or you just as a private counsel to, you know, people that are members of the board? I don't, I don't understand why you would have known that there was something wrong going on, and that wasn't recorded. The sale of the goods, you know, the Stokes Market sale, this was recorded in the meeting, maybe it wasn't accurate, but there's a lot of silence, and, you know, I'm just going to continue to read and educate myself. I was sharing with some friends, I'm old enough to remember the moon landing, which is 50 years this weekend. There were a lot of people with a lot of hope, a lot of courage, a lot of problem solving, gave us their lives to do the right thing, and I would just like to see some people step up with courage in this community to try to fix, because we're all hurting out here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who cares?
Mr. Chairman, if that place flagged us about six mark?
Yes, sir.
So, six mark, the deed doesn't indeed say 398,000. I wasn't the EDA attorney at the time Blair Mitchell was, but I went through our records and pulled the contract, and the contract was for 510,000. And I also pulled a letter from the attorney for the seller, who was Chip White, and basically, in looking at the HUD 1, the EDA paid 200, or a little over 200,000 for the inventory. They paid 298,000 for the building itself, the apartment building and then the commercial building, but they paid 200,000 for the inventory, which included the forklift, the box truck, and the van. But on the deed, it says 398,000. There's a letter from Chip White stating that's the value of the property. They valued basically 100,000 of the inventory, and I added 100,000 of the inventory price to the value they paid for the property. So, that's how we paid five, the EDA paid 510,000, but the deed actually only says 398,000. But you're more than welcome to, you know, I can provide the HUD 1 if you want to see it. TLC did the closing, and it shows on the HUD 1 that 510,000 was paid for.
Where did the inventory go?
Would you come up to the podium, please?
So, if 200,000 was paid for the inventory?
Would you get to the podium?
Yeah. If 200,000 was paid for the inventory, the forklift, that's about 15,000, a van, the only van that we've seen was worth like 1,500, and a, and a box truck, maybe 3,000, where did that 200,000 dollars go? That was not in the best interest of the citizens.
I understand, I did draft the lease of BNG Goods, but the lease of BNG Goods basically gave them the inventory to, I believe they sold it as part of their business model. So, they actually sold the inventory that was in there. I think that also included like all the fixtures and everything that was in the store. Basically, they just sold the store at turnkey. I don't know if you were ever in there, but they had all the fixtures and everything in there, so basically, BNG Goods, when they went in there, they just went there as a turnkey lease.
Well, when they did the vote with the EDA board, that vote was to purchase the real estate. Why was it, I mean, why would the EDA pay for inventory for a business?
And the resolution, if I'm not mistaken, was to purchase it for 530,000.
Right.
But they actually only purchased it for 510.
And it was still way over the, you know.
It actually, it actually appraised at almost 600,000.
No way.
I can provide the appraisal, it's viable.
Please do. We would like to see the appraisal.
Sure.
Because on a lot of the properties, we cannot find any appraisals whatsoever.
Sure, I have the appraisal on that, so I can definitely.
Please do.
While I'm searching.
Okay, I would like appraisals for anything that's available.
Anyone else here to speak? Anyone else here? Come on.
Red Hill, 420 Central Ridge Drive, Warren County. I'm a new member of the EDA board. I'm not speaking on behalf of the EDA board, but I am speaking as a board director this evening. It's very difficult for me to stand up here in front of this group and a public defense organization right now. Very difficult to do that. I hope in time that I'll develop the confidence and be able to do that, but it will take time. I want the board and I want the public to know that I'm very engaged in this organization, and specifically, I want to thank the board of supervisors for filling this position expeditiously. We need that seventh member in order to move this body forward. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here to speak? Please come up.
Melanie Salins, I have a question from Mr. Carter. It's come out that you carry the insurance for all of the properties for Front Royal, Warren County, EDA, et cetera, et cetera. What is the total income that you are getting from those properties? What percentage of your total business do those properties make up? And do you feel this factors into your decision-making while wanting to acquire new properties and then not sell them? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who cares? Second call, anyone else cares? Third, final call. Public presentations are closed with no other business to be addressed. We're adjourned.